Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, December 13th. The time is 5:30 PM. Welcome, everybody who's listening at home and those who are in the audience this evening. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbu?
Present.
Freedleeb?
Here.
Paulson is absent. Beyondich?
President Johnson?
Here.
Barneselli?
Here.
Cuffey?
President. Would everyone please stand and join me in the presence of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'll move to item four, the form. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to like to speak before the council this evening. Seeing none, move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes. 5.1A, the regular meeting that was held on November 22nd, 2022. 5.1B, the special meeting that was held on November 22nd, 2022. And item 5.1C, the special meeting that was held on November 28th, 2022. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 22-023, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is to approve Pay Estimate Number 3 to Magnette Construction for the phosphorus improvement project in the amount of $91,884. Item 5.4 is approve any elected official to attend the following. 5.4A, open house for the Northern St. Louis Soil and Water Conservation District meeting on December 20th, 2022. Item 5.4B, to attend the 2023 City of Greater Minnesota Cities Coalition of Greater Cities Legislative Action Day on Wednesday, January 25th, 2023, in St. Paul. And item 5.4C, the 2023 League of Minnesota's elected official institute, various dates and locations to be announced. And finally, under the consent agenda 5.5, approve the exempt permit for Whitetails Unlimited to conduct a raffle at the Virginia Alex Lodge Number 1,003 on March 4th, 2023. These are the items that are on the consent agenda for tonight, looking for council action.
Mayor, I will move the consent agenda for this evening.
Council of Bearbu moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support? Support by Council Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Council Beyondich?
Thank you. I would like to pull 5.2, the schedule of bills, for just some clarifications.
Very good. Item number 5.2 on the consent agenda was being pulled for further discussion by Council Beyondich, looking for a motion to approve item 5.1, 3, 4, and 5. Has been moved and supported, those exceptions. So we'll hold a vote in advance and address item 5.2, the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 22-023, the schedule of bills. Council Beyondich?
Thank you. I have been going periodically. I stop in and I do look through the credit card statements. And on our schedule of bills, we also have a charge account with Menards. My question is, do we fill out the paperwork for the rebates on any of the purchases? And if so, where does that go?
Sherry?
Mayor, council, yes. Council Beyondich, when we receive the invoice in and the sales slip is with it and there's a rebate attached, we have Pam fills out the rebate form and submits it. And then it's issued to whoever charged, whatever department it was, if it was Public Works or City Hall, what the amount was for.
So we have recouped all the rebates from this statement? $1,609.62 that those have all been turned in?
Depending if Menards, like now this week, they don't have a rebate going. So it would have to depend on whenever the rebate and if the rebate is attached to the sales slip. Sometimes the rebate isn't attached to the sales slip. Sometimes there isn't a rebate.
Okay. Because I think most of the time, there should be a rebate. And I just want to make sure that the city is capturing that income since we spend the money there.
Well, yes, we do whenever we can.
Okay, and then just for clarification on the electronic payments. And you answered this before the meeting, so thank you for doing that. There was a question on what shift fees are? And that is for the charge of?
Sale charges on the credit cards that we take in for payments down at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. And that is a fee that we also get reimbursed for because we charge the customer's credit card.
Okay, and then the last question I have is, I have not seen anything on the point-of-sale inventory that comes in. Do we have that information?
No, we don't have a salesperson at the moment either. So, but we're still working on that.
Okay, so I know I had asked, I think at the last two meetings for that information, will that be coming forward?
As soon as we get a salesperson in place.
And that's who would be responsible for the input of inventories?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Beyondich. So after the questions have been answered, like on item 5.2 of the Finance Resolution, it has been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. The motion was made by Council Bearbu and supported by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Move to item six, appearances. There are no ones scheduled to appear before the council this evening. But this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to like to come and speak before the council this evening. Seeing none, move to item seven, which is unfinished business. Item 7.1, the property at 410 Fifth Street South. I know we have a court date coming, still scheduled for that. Have we able to get an inspection or anything? And Brian, do you have any updates for us on this property?
Thank you, Mayor. No real update. We have tried to move that court date up. Our court date does continue to be the same date. And that date, the issues before the court that date are both to affirm the order that the council have made and to issue an administrative warrant to permit the city to inspect even without permission of the landowner.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions with respect to this property? Seeing none, move to item 7.2, the clinic lease. I know that we're working on some, we have some bids in and working on some adjustments to a meeting with the sentia, and those meetings are forthcoming. Is that correct, Britt? Thank you very much. Anything else? Any questions or comments on item 7.2, the clinic lease? Okay, move to item 7.3, the rental code ordinance. It's getting closer and closer to review for final approval. And we look forward to having something for us sometime in January. Is that correct, Britt? Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns or information regarding the rental code ordinance from the elected body? Seeing none, move to item number 7.4. This is to approve the second reading of City Code Chapter 10 by creating Section 10.18 entitled Camping on Public Property Prohibited. And this was moved to approve from the committee of the whole meeting. So looking for additional discussion or comments or motions to move this new chapter section forward.
I'll move the second reading of City Code 10.18.
Okay, Council Johnson moves to approve the second reading of the City Code Chapter 10.18 entitled Camping on Public Property Prohibited. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Okay, supported by Council Bearbu. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 7.5, approve. This is the second reading of City Code Chapter 2 by creating Section 2.58 entitled Regulations as to Park Lands. Also a move by, through the committee home meeting for tonight's agenda for approval of the second reading of this City Code, Chapter 2. Moved by Council Freedleeb, is there support?
Work.
Support by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, eight points discussion items. 8.1, adopt a resolution designating precincts and polling places for 2023. And I'll just ask Pam for a little bit of update. Has anything changed for any request for the polling places from 2022?
Thank you, Mayor. No, nothing has changed. This is an annual item that we have to do every year for the county.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the scheduling for the designating of the precinct and polling places for 2023?
Can I ask?
Yes, Council Freedleeb.
Was the ITMEC the only polling place in town? This past election?
Yes.
It was?
Yes.
And was there any concerns with regard to it only being there?
And I think you did have election judges going to some of the various senior housing and healthcare facilities to ensure that they had the opportunity to vote. Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further, has it been moved and supported? Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Johnson, supported by Council Bearbu. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2, adopt a resolution to hire recreation assistants as presented and approved at the committee of the whole meeting.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Council Johnson. Is there support? Supported by Council, well, there's two here. Council Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Council Beyondich?
Thank you. Are we, do we have all that we need hired? How many are we still short?
We're at 12 FTEs.
And are you looking for, was it 20?
20. We really, really, I'm going to use this for a shameless plug. We really could use people that can work day shift. So if there's anybody out there that's looking for a part-time job, we do need some daytime people, which would be before 4:00 PM. Shift starts as early as 6:00 AM up to 4:00 PM.
Is the city elected official prohibited from calling?
Yes, they are. Unfortunately, I would hire you all if I could, but unfortunately you are.
That's a great job for anybody who's interested.
It would be. It's a very interesting, varied job. Every day is different, so it is a fun job.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3, approve the 2023 on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for the Virginia Bowling Gardens LLC, doing business as the Virginia Bowling Gardens. Moved by Council Freedleeb and supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, is approve the 2023 tobacco licenses for the following businesses. Item 8.4A, Edwards Oil Incorporated, doing business as the Lucky Seven Northside. Item 8.4B, Edwards Oil Incorporated, doing business as Lucky Seven Hoover Road. Item 8.4C, Miners Incorporated, doing business as Super One Foods North. Item 8.4D, Miners Incorporated, doing business as Super One Foods. Item 8.4C, Renda Incorporated, doing business as Rocket Liquor. Item 8.4F, IYS Ventures LLC, doing business as iMart Stores. Item G, C&amp;B Warehouse Distributing Incorporated, doing business as the Virginia Shortstop. H, C&amp;B Warehouse Distributing Incorporated, doing business as Virginia Shortstop Express. Item I, Super One Liquor LLC, doing business as Super One Liquor. Item J, Holiday Stations LLC, doing business as Holiday Station Number 148. Item K, Holiday Station Stores LLC, doing business as Holiday Number 41. Item L, the Virginia Smoke Shop LLC, doing business as the Smoke Shop. Item M, Mahmoud Wabaz, doing business as Smoke Shop, Super Smoke Shop. Item N, Brenda Peliquin, doing business as Brenda's Mini Mart. Item O, Dennis Yorzak, doing business as the New Zet. Those are the items on 8.4. Moved to approve these licenses by Council Freedleeb. Is there support by Council Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.5, is approve the 2023 second-hand goods licenses for the following. Item 8.5A, Anthony Altobel, doing business as Power Play Sports. Item 8.5B, Priscilla Trustman, doing business as Jackie's Attic Thrift Store. Item 5.5C, Rachel Strasser, doing business as Rachel's Thrift Store. Those are the items on item 8.5, looking for a motion. A motion by Council Barneselli, supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6, is approve the 2023 pond broker's license for Thomas Anderson doing business as North Star Pond and Gun Incorporated. Moved by Council Freedleeb, supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.7, approve the 2023 solid waste hauler's license for waste management. Moved to approve by Council Johnson, supported by?
Support.
Council Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.8, approve the 2023 massage licenses for the following businesses. Item 8.8A, Susan Santi, doing business at Ah Massage. And item 8.8B, Wendy Lindsay, doing business as the Pebble Spa Company. Motion by Council Beyondich to approve. Is there support by Council Freedleeb? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.9, approve the 2023 kennel license for Jane Leighton, doing business as grooming by Jane. Moved by Council Freedleeb and supported by Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.10, appoint an interview committee for the sales and marketing position. We did make those appointments, did we not, for volunteers? We did not. So we're looking to appoint an interview committee for the sales and marketing position. And Britt, do you have any suggestions as to how you want to proceed? You and Sherry?
Hearing policy does stay up to three council members.
Very good, thank you. So it says we may have up to three council members, but it's not necessary to do so. So I ask, is there any councillor that's interested in sitting in on the interview committee for the sales and marketing position for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center? A Council Beyondich would be one councillor that is requesting to serve an interview committee. Is there another?
Here, should we ask Council Paulson? She has a lot of interests in that.
Okay, well, let's appoint Council Paulson in abstentia. And in the event that she does not or cannot or unable to do so, then if there's nobody else interested, I'll take her place in that regard. Okay? So looking for one more councillor. Like to serve on the, it doesn't have to be, can two suffice?
I would, if you need another one, I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, very good then.
Be an alternate. Or I'll be there, whatever you need.
Okay, and then also Council Freedleeb. So looking for a motion to approve three councillors to sit in on the interview committee for sales and marketing would be Council Beyondich, Council Paulson, and Council Freedleeb. Looking for that motion.
So moved, Mayor.
Moved by Council Bearbu, is there support? Support by Council Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And I see we have a new audience member in the room this evening, our sixth district St. Louis County Commissioner, Keith Nelson. Thanks for stopping by. Did you have something you'd like to address the council for before we go to committee reports? Okay, you're welcome to come to the podium, and we're always looking for some good news.
A lot of good news out there, I guess, but... I got to do this. Thank you. Again, I came here for one purpose today, and I apologize for being late. We had a marathon St. Louis County Board meeting today. And following most of the speed limits, this is about as quick as I could make it from there to here. I came this evening for one purpose. And it's to thank a 27-year city councillor. And I know you probably have some things that you're doing, but it's, well, I appreciate everyone who puts themselves out there in elected office, because all of you do, okay? And when you do put yourself out there, as soon as you get sworn in, you can get sworn out. And but putting yourself out there is really, that service to your community is more than, I think a lot of people realize it is. But 27 years. And I just, I had to be here, I believe this is the last meeting.
We have one more.
You've got one more.
One more on December 27th.
Well, then I'm ahead of the last meeting, Mayor Cuffey. But I again wanted to say, make reach, thank you, to someone who was here before. I got on the county board, because now I've been on the county board for 20 years, but Charlie was here long before that, to someone who's been truly an example for me, a mentor for me. That's it.
And the councillor that you were referring to?
The young man on the end over here, Council Bearbu.
Also Charles Bearbu.
Charles Bearbu, okay.
Very good, thank you.
Can I say a couple words, Mr. Mayor?
Well, Council Bearbu, we have a limited amount of time.
No, I'm going to take...
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I'm going to take two seconds, if I may.
Yeah, Council Bearbu.
This is greatly appreciated, Commissioner Nelson. I've worked with you since 19, I don't know, I started in 1990, but it was about, I don't know when you started exactly, but you've been a wonderful commissioner to work with over all these years. You've helped us get things done for the city of Virginia. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to miss this position. And I'm leaving here on the last day of the last council meeting on the 27th. I don't intend to go dormant totally. I'm going to do some committee things and some other things throughout the city of Virginia and the area. So thank you very much for the kind words.
Coffee pot will always be on.
I know that. I've had coffee with you a number of times, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Cuffey.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Nelson, for coming forward and taking the time to come and recognize Council Bearbu for all the work and his tenure and everything he's done for the city of Virginia. We hope to do the same prior to his departure from the city council. So thank you very much for coming and for sharing those words. I think you're the first commissioner that I've, in my tenure, that have come in and to recognize the service of someone from this elected body. So I thank you for that. We thank you very much. Okay, that was emotional and well-deserved, Council Bearbu. And so I'm sure many more accolades to come.
You will probably see a few tears on the 27th, because I've been working with you folks for a long time if we say something that day, because this has been special for me all these years. So thank you very much.
As long as there are tears of joy, that's all. Okay, so we'll move to item nine on the agenda, which are committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on December 6th. Item nine point one, the committee, the whole meeting that was held on December 6, 2022. And we'll turn this long committee report over to our city administrator for administration, Britt C. Benison. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee, the whole held on December 6, 2022, we had NTS was present to discuss the engagement letter to complete the environmental soil management plan for the proposed public safety center. It was moved and supported to approve that agreement to add to the contract the cost that will not exceed a certain dollar amount.
Okay, looking for a motion.
To move.
Move to approve by Counselor Freedley, is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzeli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Matt Reed from SEH was present to discuss the proposal for the GIS development for the sanitary and storm sewer system for the city. It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution for the professional services agreement with SEH for the city implementation of the GIS system in 2023.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Bearbu. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the agreement with Cross Anderson to proceed with the request for proposals for demolition of the homes in the public safety area that were already acquired by the city with an ad alternate for the homes not, that are not currently owned by the city.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support, support by Counselor Barnzeli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Further discussion, Counselor Beyondich.
And, sorry, I have to pull this up. So I was sent a message by a constituent of Virginia, and I feel compelled, I was asked to actually ask this question at the meeting, so I am asking the question. I would like every member of the council and the mayor to answer. Can we as a city afford another $30 million building? Yes, we can, no, we can't, or not sure. So I have, I have brought up what the public has asked me to do, and I don't know if this is cause for discussion, or?
I'll go first. Let's go around the room. I'll go first, and then we'll go right around the room, if that's okay. Yes, I do believe that it's imperative that we build this new facility. Public safety billing is a very important part of providing services for our committee, both particularly public safety and EMS. And if you look at the environment in which the fire department is working under, it's their deplorable conditions, and we need to have a new facility for that. As far as affordability is, we're taking every step and making every opportunity to make it as affordable as we can moving forward. And I believe it's an investment for the long-term future and services that are provided to the committee, so affordability is being able to get the financing for it. We are, we work very hard, our staff has done to do so. We have finance mechanisms in place to accomplish this. We're all the way down the road moving forward, once we've made that decision, and I stand by the decision, I think it's imperative that we do build this, so those are my thoughts. Counselor Freedley.
And I would say, to the depth we are already into this project, yes, we must.
Okay, Counselor Bearbu.
I've been around a long time, and we've been looking at this for many, many years. You've got to remember, the old facility that the fire department is in is 107 years old. It has structural deficiencies that we've been through. We've had studies done on it. It cannot hold the new equipment that's coming onboard as we upgrade our systems. The safety, you have to remember, and the healthcare of this community are dependent upon first-class individuals and individual computer systems, whatever you want, and individual new equipment that comes out to get to people in times of heart attacks, et cetera. We cover 504 square miles, and we go out to 900 and some square miles for intercepts, so we need to keep a modern police department. I'm all for public safety, and we will find the additional funds that we need for this, so I'm fully 100% supporter of this new facility.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bearbu. Counselor Barnzeli, your thoughts about our new public safety facility? Are you supportive of it? Thank you very much, Counselor Johnson.
Mayor, I'd reserve my remarks until after the 601 Truth and Taxation.
Yeah, I was hoping that we already have a vote on, a motion on the Florida vote, I was hoping to vote on this. By that, I didn't anticipate the question in that regard, so I'd like to, if that's okay, just vote on this real quick and then move on. We've already two minutes beyond, so another minute's not gonna hurt. Pardon? Right, correct. Counselor Johnson, anything?
Yes, then I will comment. I voted no when we first did this, because we don't have the rest of the funding in place. We do have $9 million plus dollars in place to, for land acquisition and demo. So at this point, I'm comfortable with where we are, with what we're moving to, and there are huge opportunities moving forward with additional state funding. So to answer the question, yes, we can afford what we're doing. We don't have the money for the rest of it yet, but I believe it's coming, and I'm confident that we will have the support we need from multiple agencies to move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Beyondich.
Thank you, and I thank everybody for taking the time to address this. I have spoke with Sheri and Britt on this. I have been nervous about the funding, but I've been assured that there is adequate funding available for this project. And I would wholeheartedly agree that our fire department cannot hold the equipment that is required, that we, that we already have currently. And to move forward, that building is inadequate. If anybody's been in the basement, I know last year we had the floor compromised when a truck rolled in there. So with that being said, I'm okay with moving forward, and I think our process is working, and we just, we'll find the money for it. And I think there's an opportunity from different agencies to help us out with this. So thank you once again for taking the time for this constituent.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Beyondich. So it has been moved and supported to approve the proceed, counsel to proceed with the RFP for demolition of homes in the public safety area with an ad alternate for homes not owned by the city as of yet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now recess our city council meeting and convene the hearing with respect to two things. One is the resolution setting the final tax levy for 2022 payable in 2023, and then the proposed 2023 budget and property taxes. So we are, we will be discussing this now, and then moving to take action when we reconvene the city council meeting with respect to both of these items. Item number one is, of course, the resolution setting the final levy for 2022 payable in 2023. The following sums of money be levied for the current year, collectible in 2023, upon the taxable property in the city of Virginia for the following purposes. The general fund levy revenue of $5,296,843. The special levy for VIDA, which is the Virginia Economic Development Authority, of The special levy on tax abatement in the amount of $158,818. The debt levy, bond 2021A Street and Alley of $161,910. And bonded indebtedness in the amount of $676,259, with a total levy of $6,364,727. Be it further resolved that the city finance director hereby instructed to transmit a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of the St. Louis County, Minnesota, which copy will be the authority of said county auditor to spread the above tax levy upon his books as taxes for the city of Virginia for the year ending December 31st, 2023. That is the resolution that we will be considering when we reconvene our council meeting. Is there any comments, questions, concerns, or any additions or corrections by the elected body or by our staff? Counselor Beyondich.
On the sources, the revenue, the transfer in from other sources, could you explain what the other sources are, where that money would be coming from?
I believe that's, we're on a different resolution.
That would be for the budget resolution, which we'll be discussing next.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So Sheri, if you just quickly explain the special levy tax abatement in the amount of $158,818 for the public certification, that is for which project?
The PNH. It has various names, Joy Global, Matsu, and now, I don't remember what the sign says out there now. But this was the PNH originally done, so 100% of their taxes, it's 100% tax abatement, so out of their taxes, they've paid their property taxes already for 2022. We specifically asked for this dollar amount to pay for the bond, that was a $2 million bond, goes to pay for the payments on that $2 million bond. They pay for that out of their taxes that would have come to the city.
Very good, thank you for that explanation. And then the debt levy, bond 2021A Street and Alley?
Yes, that is the first phase of the Street and Alley project that started last year. And I believe on Thursday, we're having a 3:30 meeting here with George Ilertson, and I don't know if Mia Tilbo will be there, our bond counsel, but yes, we will be looking at another bond for Phase Two.
And that, that meeting is set for December 15th, which is Thursday at 3:30 PM here in the city council chamber?
Correct.
And the last item, the bonded indebtedness, could you give the general public a little indication what that is?
That is the general funds bond debt that, or lease agreements that we have in the general fund for the different departments.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions? Counselor Bearbu first.
Sheri, that last time, did you explain that that has actually gone down, because we've taken care of some of our bonds, so this has actually gone down from a year ago? Is that, that is correct?
That is correct, and I can list them out if you want me to. We have a 2008A series Recreation City Bond that was done back in 2008, $171,444. And let me see, I think that one is gonna be paid off this year, this next year. There's two bonds that are actually gonna fall off. Yeah, 2008 will be, final payment will be done February 1st. And then the next bond, 202012, that was a charter equipment bond, which we bought some very needed equipment. In fact, that's a proposal coming up for 2023, is that we're gonna look at getting a G O. equipment bond for much-needed equipment. But that will be paid off too, on February 1st of next year. And that is $262,708. I'm sorry, $781. Lease police radios and tasers of almost $30,029,999. Lease the fire department's radios, $24,148. And then the lease for the public work sweepers and loaders, $141,720, totaling $676,259.
Thank you, Sheri. Any other questions, comments for our staff with respect to this? I think, thank you for explaining that to the general public moving forward, what that means with respect to our total, for this resolution of the, setting the final tax levy for 2022. Okay, so any other questions or comments from that? Pam, have we received any, any other written communication with respect to any questions or comments about the final tax levy?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move the second item on the agenda, which is the notice of the 2023 proposed total budget and property taxes. The Virginia Minnesota City Council is holding a public meeting on its budget and on the amount of property taxes we are proposing to collect and pay for the costs of services that the city will provide in 2023. In 2022, with respect to spending, expenditures in 2022 budget was $16,000, I'm sorry, $16,924,44. The proposed budget is scheduled to increase, if approved, to $18,303,634. And we will be levying from the following areas. The general fund levy with an increase of 4.5% or a total of $228,094. The special levy, which is, what is discussed in the earlier motion with respect to the PNH tax abatement of $158,818. And the special levy for VIDA, $70,897. And the debt levy service with Street and Alley, 2021 Bond A, $161,910. So the debt service of $676,259, which is, was outlined earlier in our, our previous resolution that we're considering for final tax levy. In the general fund taxes, 2022, in the general fund, the total levy was $5,068,749. The 2023 proposed levy has increased to $5,296,843. The debt service in 2023, I'm sorry, 2022, was $1,009,415. In 2023, that's going to be reduced to $676,259, as outlined above in the debt service with respect to the levy. And the 2022 levy for tax abatement was $161,703. In 2023, that's going to be reduced to $158,818. All Virginia, Minnesota residents, city residents were, was encouraged, and are have been encouraged to attend the public hearing or send your written comments, as noted, to the clerk, which is Pamela Bean, which is to the Virginia City Hall, 327 First Street South in Virginia, Minnesota. Do we have any written comments with respect to the notice of the total budget, the proposed taxes for adoption of budget?
No, we do not, Mayor.
We receive no written comments in that regard. So we'll move to the elected body. Any questions, comments, concerns, or clarifications you're asking for with respect to our budget in 2023 and our proposed levy of 4.5%? Counselor Bearbu.
Yeah, this isn't a question, it's just a comment that I would like to make. I really appreciate, since this is my last year working with budgets and stuff, what the staff in this city has done to make the reductions and things that we are looking at. This is a step that we need to continue on in the future, and so I hope the rest of you, those counselors, will continue on this path, but I want to thank the staff for all the work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbu. So any other questions, comments with respect to the notice of proposed 2023 budget and property taxes? Any questions, we'll take action when we reconvene the council meeting. Any questions that you might have, Counselor Beyondich?
So now I can ask my question?
Please do, yes.
When you, on here, the transfer in from other sources? What are the other sources? That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
That hopefully is going to be into the general fund if we go with the proposed 2023 equipment bond. If, we have quite a bit of a capital outlay list that some things are required, really necessity, and. necessity, and so we're hoping to have a bond, equipment bond for much needed equipment.
The other sources being?
It would be a bond.
It's coming from a bond?
It'd be a bond.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's important, as we discuss that, the equipment bond, what equipment is necessary. I did receive a significant amount of inquiry from, particularly the Park and Rec, with respect to some of the equipment that's been old and antiquated, or, you know, some, are two decades old or more, looking for some, some new equipment, and I think that'll be discussed as we move forward with the equipment bond. Sheri?
Yeah, just to give you one piece of equipment, the fire hall is looking for rescue truck and some minor equipment, and we're talking $800,000. That's a lot to put on the back of the taxpayers in one year. So if we can get a bond and spread it over 10, we'll be good.
Counselor Biondich?
When we, when we looked at our budget, is that where the department has doing, do their planning, so we know what's coming up for equipment that they will need? Thank you.
I'm sorry, yeah, we have a 20-year, and it's a good question, we have a 20-year capital outlay, I call it their wish list, but sometimes it becomes a need, it's not a want, it's a need, especially the rescue truck. We pushed it off and kicked the can down the street. It's the same with public works, we have welded boxes on dump trucks, we have put floors in the floorboards of vehicles, because you can, you know, we've tried to extend the life, but it's becoming kind of dangerous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Okay, is there anything else before we move, before we go to Counselor Johnson, I think, then back over to Counselor Bearable? Counselor Johnson?
Just wondering, this gentleman who came in late, wanted to speak at the meeting for the taxes.
Well, let's, let's finish what we have here, and then we'll, we'll call this gentleman forward, and he can certainly address the council, be happy to have you do so. So if there's any other questions or comments before we move, two comments from the audience, Counselor Bearable?
Just one quick comment, Maya, the rescue truck will slowly pay for itself, because we build insurance companies when we go out, if there's an accident where there's vehicles involved, whatever, maybe insurance companies get billed by the city and we do get reimbursed. It doesn't add up fast, but over time, it will add up to help pay for that rescue truck.
And I know this levy and the budget, total budget, it creates some angst, lots of angst with many of the residents in the city of Virginia and the business owners, by increasing our levy, it does increase some of the taxes that people are paying, and based upon what the county does, and, and their taxes are going up, and I, and I'm just as concerned about that as everyone else moving forward, so that's something we're going to have to address soon. Sir, would you please come forward, and you're welcome to address the council, and please state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you. My name is John Cowan, I live in the Midway area of Virginia. I'm at a disadvantage, because I haven't attended very many council meetings, but I do appreciate your work, councilors, and especially yours, Mary Coffey, for a variety of reasons, and because you're proactive with our community and strengthening it. My, my question tonight is, just rely, it refers back to the property taxes at my, my home, is scheduled to pay for, in 2023, and I realize I might be out of order, because I, I don't know how to appeal this, but basically, the issue I'm dealing with is an increase of 20.5% of increase on the property tax over last year. That was a shocker, and I guess I need direction at this point, if it's a process of appealing, is it too late, or can I still appeal? And how do I do that?
I, I think what we can do, answer that question for you, if I may, and please correct me if that is not accurate, that in order to appeal, you know, the, your, the evaluation of your home, which has increased significantly, as you would indicate, as mine and others have, that you need to go before the Board of Appeals through the city and then to St. Louis County. Now, there's two ways in which to do that. Next year, we're going to have a Board of Appeals, and probably going to be in March or April, somewhere in that area, and, and you'll be able to come to the truth, or be able to come to the Board of Appeals and, and appeal your, your, your property tax, or your property valuation increase at that time. You do have another option, and the second option is you may call St. Louis County Assessor's Office and have them come to your house, and, and they can reevaluate your home and make adjustments as they deem appropriate in that regard, prior to the Board of Appeals, which is, which we convene once each spring for the appeal of any property tax, property evaluations that's conducted by the county. The city does not do evaluations any longer, the city council doesn't do that, it is the county assessor's office that assesses all the properties in, in the, in the area, and particularly in Virginia, and we are at the mercy of their adjustments as they deem appropriate, and those are the two options you have, unless there's other options, I would, I would like the, the council elected body to let you know that. So Counselor Bearable?
There is a third option that you can do, that you can bring to the Board of Appeals also in the spring. If you want to spend some of your own money, get a certified appraiser from a company, and those aren't as expensive as people think they are to have it appraised and, and bring those documentations into the Board of Appeals, and that carries a lot of weight when it comes for an adjustment on your taxes. Usually, they don't like to, seeing there's a mechanism through the state, if it goes up too high and you pay too much more, I think it's over 12%, then you get an adjustment and you don't have to go any further, so there's another mechanism through the state.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. If you have any questions or concerns, you can certainly call, I would urge you to call the county, they'll set you a process, they can answer your question more sooner than in next spring, and so during the evaluation process.
Okay.
And that would be the step, I think, would be, wouldn't be costly, it wouldn't cost you anything to do so, and you, you might get a more, an answer that's more conducive to what you need, instead of having to wait until, till our, our next meeting in spring.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your consideration.
Yes, sir, you're welcome, thank you. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you.
Did you have a question for this gentleman?
No, I just wanted to thank you for coming forward. I have another person in Midway, he reached out to me about his taxes also, so you're not alone in that, but I appreciate you coming forward and talking to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions, comments with respect to the budget? Thank you for explaining those items for us, Sheri. So we are looking at taking action once we reconvene the council meeting. So is there anything else regarding to this special hearing before we adjourn this and reconvene our council meeting? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the, we'll make a motion, need a motion, okay? A move by Counselor Bearable, supported by Counselor Barnzelli, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. We'll now reconvene our city council meeting, and prior to continuing on with the committee reports, we'll take action on two things. First, we'll take action on the, on setting the levy for 2022, I mean, yeah, payable in 2023, the total levy amount of $6,364,727. Move to approve and adopt by Counselor Freely, is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearable, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, the levy payable is now adopted. Move to the next item on the agenda is the approval of the total budget and the property taxes for 2023. And Sheri, before that motion is made, what is the total budget that we are approving for 2023?
Sorry. Mayor, council, the total general fund budget is $18,303,634.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve?
Moved.
Move to approve and adopt by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Freely, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the budget for 2023 is adopted. Thank you, everybody. Move the, reconvene the committee reports, Britt?
Thank you, we're on item 9.1D. Item 9.1D is adopt resolution for approval of the quote for RE300 from Neo Water Treatment at a cost of $34,200 plus a shipping fee of $6,500 for the wastewater treatment plant.
And I know we moved this, some discussion about the costs associated with the destination fee, but looking for council action?
Also move that resolution on those two expenses.
Counselor Bearable moves to adopt and approve the quote for the RE300, is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Yes, Counselor Freely.
Well, Sheri, this is an annual cost, correct?
Yes, it is, and actually, I'm just making a note to contact Paul Steinman with our bond counsel.
Did we, but did we budget accordingly, then? Like, did we anticipate the $6,500?
It's going to be a little more than what I budgeted, but to realize, we're going to probably have to raise the fees, too.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sheri, thank you, Counselor Freely. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the quote for concrete crushing at the dump on North Side from Louie Lustick and Sons Incorporated for a mobilization fee of $12,000 and a cost of $745 per ton.
Thank you.
Moved.
Move to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And the $745 is the top amount, if we supply some other stuff, that amount goes down, and the city saves money by being actively involved in providing something.
The filler material.
Yes, that, thank you, Britt.
Yep.
Hey, thank you. Has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve proposing an amendment to the Wolverine Blue Line Club for the utilization of the current room rental structure that is in the Brockridge Youth Hockey Agreement, for the Blue Line Club to use the ballroom, boardroom, and the meeting room with Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Moved.
Move to approve by Counselor Johnson and supported by?
Support.
Supported by Counselor Biondich, further discussion? No, no, I'm sorry, Counselor Barnzelli, I'm sorry, Counselor Barnzelli approved, further discussion? Counselor Biondich?
And, and I think when I, we first started talking about this, this is for the use of the ballroom, boardroom, and meeting rooms, I just have a concern on the ballroom, is that where they're going to be doing their spaghetti feeds?
Correct.
So for cleanup, I mean, I just look at what we put into that, to have a spaghetti feed, is there anything if we have stains damaged because of that? I mean, before, we used the minors, where it was concrete, we designed this building for a convention center, and that ballroom is a beautiful space, and that's my only concern, and the other one is, and I, and I know it was explained, but I look, I, sometimes I look at those rates, and I'm looking at the nonprofits, and this, and I understand the concept of it, it just kind of sticks in my throat a little bit, that we have this beautiful space, and we told the crafters that we couldn't do anything better, they, this is not what this was meant to be, they could go elsewhere. So it's just my personal feeling on it, that our staff sets up, tears down, does the cleanup, does everything in that room, and we were going to hold everybody to pay what that room cost, so that is my two cents, thank you.
Hey, thank you, any other comments, Counselor Freely?
I, I fully understand your concern, Maya, but I also, you know, it is a multipurpose space, and it's used for all kinds of food service, and I do believe that the cost break for the use of the room is justified by the volume of attendance that's generated by the hockey programs that are bringing teams in from across the state, and so I really think that it's not going to be a burden, even if we had to have some specialized cleaning done or whatever, we will have the volume of attendance that's going to generate the revenue necessary to cover those costs, I, I believe, I don't know that factually, but I believe that.
Hey, thank you. Okay, has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion, Counselor Bearable?
Maya, I, I understand where you're coming from, but we want to build this facility to as many events as we can, if we start, I don't want to use the word discrimination, but if we start picking and choosing who's going to be able to use that, we're going to lose what we, our objective is, and that's to multiply this by tenfold over time. This first year is going to be the telling year, if you get bad vibes back that we're not willing to do this, I believe those tiles are replaceable, aren't they, they're, so we can, they're squares, we can take them out if something happens to one and put a new one in, we have spares, I believe, from what I've been told. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think we just need to leave it open. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Bearable, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, and, and I do remember the discussion about the craft fairs, but I was there on Saturday, and it was not only in the ballroom, it was in hallway and across, so the folks that are running craft fairs, that know what they're doing, are bringing in the revenue, and they're willing to pay for the space, knowing what they're going to get, so I, I think that we're, we've made it through our first year, and I think we are finding the balance as we move forward, but I appreciate you bringing those concerns forward.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson, it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich?
And, thank you for listening, it's, it's just from me, from my heart, and I, I totally understand, and I go along with it, but I just wanted to say how I felt about it, so thank you for considering that.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Biondich, moved and supported, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, item number G is adopt the resolution authorizing entering into an independent contractor agreement for figure skating programs with the individuals listed on the resolution.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the Park and Recreation Director to submit an application for the 2024 IIHF Women's World Championship to be held at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center if we are successful with their application.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freely, been supported by Counselor Barnzelli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt a resolution to authorize the Park and Recreation Director to apply for and accept grant funding from two different grant sources for an outdoor fitness area.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to receive and file the report presented by Encompass Engineering. It was moved and supported to receive and file the report presented by Encompass Engineering for the facade repair at the Essentia Health Virginia Clinic.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
For good discussion.
Counsel Freely, further discussion?
Did I miss?
Counsel Freely.
What, what, is there damage to it, or is it aging, or?
This was a, from an insurance claim from when the building was built, this is, it's been a very long process from twenty fourteen, we've been fighting with this.
Is there any insurance that we will be able to?
There's eight hundred thousand dollars left in insurance, and there's three point two million dollars worth of repairs. So the, the next resol, the next motion is for us to continue discussing how we're gonna move forward with this. The most immediate repairs were made, the windows were leaking, was what the problem was. So the windows were all reset, so now what needs to be done is the repair to the facade that was damaged when the windows were leaking. You and I, as laypeople, wouldn't see it, we don't see that, we don't see that there's a problem in there, but when you go there and look, there is cracks in the stucco underneath the windows, and it just needs to be repaired.
It's an endangering type of thing?
It could be, if, if water got into those intrusions.
Cause it's not aesthetic, I don't know what he notices.
No, he, we, like I said, you and I wouldn't really notice it. And they did note in the report that there are some maintenance things that are starting to pop up that we should probably start taking note of, too, because it is our building, you know, that we're gonna talk about some problems that need to be fixed.
That's burdensome to our budget?
Yeah, it would be.
Cause we own that property.
We own the building.
And did we anticipate, or have we budgeted accordingly in anticipation of this?
Nope, we're, we're hoping to continue to seek funding for this from other sources, including maybe the tenant.
Thank you. Well, I mean, it's, so Essentia is the one that's saying this must be done, or?
Essentia said, we will not talk to you about extending your lease or purchasing the building until we know what needs to be repaired. So that was what necessitated us getting the report again, to confirm what needed to be repaired, and then we can start talking about what, what the path forward is.
Oh, okay. Hmm. Kind of a hostage situation.
Yeah, kind of, just a discussion. And we, and we also do have a fund that we had set aside in the last bond issuance that we put money into annually, that cannot be used for this, but at the time of sale could be used for any repairs that need to be done.
Certainly not three point one million.
So certainly not three point two million, so there is a discussion to be had, and costs right now are very high. When we had the quote two years ago, it was two million, so.
Actually less.
Six to one, half dozen to the other, you know, and, yeah.
And we, we, we received a settlement from all the insurance company, we received ex amount of dollars, we used that to do some of the repairs, this is what's left over that needs to be done, and then we had to identify what had to be done with the money that we have left over, and this is where we're at right now, so I think it's, it's triggers the needs for us to, for our next motion after this, is to find a way, and when, and when we start negotiating for the sale or continued lease of that clinic with Essentia Health, we have to make some necessary improvements structurally. So has been moved and supported, is there any, has not, okay, looking for a motion first. Oh, wait a minute, Counselor Bearable?
No, no, I'll make the motion first.
Will you make a motion?
Then I'll discuss after.
Okay, Counselor Ja, Bearable makes the motion to, to receive and file?
Yeah.
The presented report from Encompass Engineering.
There was a motion for that.
So, all right, read back the motion, and then the support, and then we'll vote.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Freely, to receive and file the report presented from Encompass Engineering for the facade repair at Essentia Health Virginia.
Okay, thank you, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearable?
Yeah, this is an example of why we cannot, as, as a body of a council, sit on these things when we need to re, repair, because costs, and you've noticed that, I've noticed it every year I've been as council, costs keep going up and up and up. So in the future, we need to make better decisions on how to, if we need to do a bond to keep it cheaper, bond rates are going up now, they were down cheaper than heck when we first started this, so we need to be very careful, and I won't be around any longer, but I, please, look at these things with, cause it's gone up, it started out at one point six, and it went to two million, as Britt said, now it's up to three point one. So, and we got eight hundred thousand, and that was, eight hundred thousand was there when it was one point six, so we should've made a decision back then, and we didn't. Just a little word of advice for the future.
Well, it's, it's a convoluted issue, because we, it was part of a negotiation process for the sale of the hospital, all those discussions moving forward over the years about it's gonna be a purchase or gonna be a lease, so right now, the motion is just to receive and file this. So it has been moved and supported to receive and file. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, now the next one.
Yeah, the next motion is authorize staff to work internally and externally to keep the facade project at Essentia Health Virginia Clinic moving forward.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
I'll support, Mayor.
Counsel Bearable, further discussion?
I made my mo, speech a little too early.
Yeah, you, you did it at the, at the previous, so you, you're just ditto, huh? Just ditto on this one? Okay. All those in favor sig, most, additional comments, Counsel Freely?
But has Essentia offered any matching funds to?
We haven't had that discussion yet.
Oh, okay.
They do have a copy of the report, we just got it in early November, they have a copy of the report. I just presented it to you guys, just for you guys to have that knowledge that this is what we have, and then that's the plan, is when we get to negotiations for the lease, that we start talking about how we're gonna move this path forward, so.
The only reason I say that is because, if you recall, over the course of the life of the time that they've been in there, they put in twenty-six some odd million dollars into the hospital to keep it operational. Do the same if they're planning on utilizing the clinic to that degree. That's my, that's my two cents.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think we're setting the table for discussions as to, you know, how that money's gonna be utilized, and what kind of agreement we can come to, or what kind of proposals during discussions to bring back. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to direct city staff to work on creating an internship opportunity with the University of Minnesota, as stated in the document that was provided by the U of M.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Freely, supported by Counsel Johnson, is there's no further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And just a side note, Fire Chief Frederickson did ask, he did, there is a memo in the packet where he did ask that he doesn't have the information ready for this meeting, so he asked to come back to a future meeting with the information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution to hire John Hodkins as a patrol officer and authorize the execution of memorandum of understanding for lateral transfer.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support? Support by Counsel Barneselli, further discussion? He's coming back to the Virginia Police Department.
He is, and this brings us up to what, we will lead down one officer after this hire.
And, you know, so looking forward to him, his return, he's a fine officer, so. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to allow staff to send a letter to ask for the advising of the creation of the community development coordinator position to be in the MAP union.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Bearable, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to authorize the closure of city buildings to allow for mandatory staff training on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution to hire the seasonal recreation assistants for the outdoor rinks.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support? Counsel Bearable, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
There was discussion held regarding the contract for the public access television provider, it was moved and supported to allow the city attorney to review the proposed contract for the public access television service and to review the live stream portion of the contract.
Okay.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Freely, is there support? Support by Counsel Barneselli, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to allow staff to review the Friends of the Greenhouse Agreement with the city before the end of the year.
Moved.
Moved by Counsel Johnson, supported by?
I'll support.
Counsel Freely, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported after closed session to approve the purchase agreement for property, for the city to acquire properties owned by Masabi Property Management.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counsel Johnson, is there support? Support by Counsel Barneselli, further discussion? This is contingent upon funding?
This is contingent upon a development agreement with a developer.
Thank you very much, Counsel Beyondich.
And I was asked what these, these are all the, the property, the various properties?
Yes, these are various properties owned by Masabi Property Management, most, the majority of them are vacant except for one. One is commercial, the rest are residential, one of the property, one of the vacant properties is burnt, actually, it's been burnt sitting for two years, waiting to be demolished. With the development agreement that we're going to enter into, they will be demolished, the existing properties will be demolished because they are blighted and condemned, and then houses will be built on those properties.
Would that, would the properties be sold to others?
The development agreement we're gonna work with, they're going to give us a lump sum to give the properties to them.
Hey, thank you.
Yep. And then the two remaining parcels, we are working on how they would fit in either for sale or for acquisition, the few remaining people we have left that need to move out the acquisition area into those parcels, so.
Hey, thank you, moved and supported, right? Has it been? Any further discussion? Counsel Freely?
Will we have confirmation prior to closing for the assistance of the I triple R B for the demolition?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Freely, moved and supported, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And it was moved and supported to adopt a resolution to allow the city to purchase a portion of property in parcel zero nine zero zero one eight zero, zero zero nine seven eight, and zero zero nine eight one, in order to obtain the necessary easement for the road right of way known as Thirteenth Street South for the twenty twenty-three Street Improvement Project.
Moved by, to approve by Counsel Johnson, supported by Counsel Bearable, is there any further discussion? Here?
At a cost of?
Four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
At a cost of four thousand, eight hundred dollars, thank you, Counsel Freely, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
No further items from that meeting, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Over to item nine point two, the Street and Alley Committee meeting that was held on December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and I was able to attend, just to listen in at this meeting, so we'll turn it over to the committee chair, Counsel Bearable, for information for the council, Counsel Bearable.
Yeah, we, we did, couldn't have an official meeting until Counselor, or Mayor Cuffey turned up, Counsel Johnson had to work a shift, and he couldn't get out of it, and Carl, I don't know what happened, Carl, I don't know whether you just didn't get it on your calendar or forgot. We did make some decisions, that's why we're bringing it to, to the council. First of all, Matt Reed reviewed all the Mindat, Howie, fifty-three and Eighteenth Street intersections that Mindat's gonna be working on. We're gonna be working on changes up at Kamatsu, where the golf course road goes in, and where Ninth Street comes down, there's a whole big section of maps and stuff, and we can get those to all the counselors, the packet on that, and we'll, we'll do, there's no action we need to do on that as far as Street and Alley. We do have to have an action item, we looked at, to review and approve a project scope for the FY twenty-two Federal HUD funding for infrastructure projects. Britt needs to get this done in the paperwork again very soon, correct, Britt?
December thirtieth, so.
It's December thirtieth. This is for that money we're going to get from the federal government, what is it, three million dollars? So we need to get this done, so we push this to the council meeting for approval, cause we need to get this paperwork finished, otherwise we will lose that three million dollars from the federal government, and we don't wanna lose that. So I'm gonna entertain a motion that we authorized our city administrator to finish the paperwork along with, Matt Reed's gonna help you on that, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and at the meeting, we had the map showing the three alleys that we wanted to use this funds on, at a previous council meeting, we had discussed using this funds on alleys because it was money that we didn't anticipate getting, and so the three alleys are shown on the map in the packet.
Yep. So we will make sure you get that, but we're going to be doing three alleys, and that's going to be making up most of that three million dollars from an estimate.
It's a six point two million dollar project.
Project. Alleys are not gonna be cheap to fix because all the infrastructure is buried, and they're, and most of it's broken underneath, or a lot of it is. So we need to, I will make a motion that we authorize staff and S E H to move forward to getting the rest of the paperwork done for this infrastructure funding through the federal HUD program.
Okay, motion by Counsel Bearable, is there support? Support by Counsel Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and, I'm sorry, Counsel Beyondich?
Thank you, did you say that this was specified for alleys and not a street?
Yeah, this, this was at a, we did this at what, Steve, the last Street and Alley, we pushed that through with your suggestion on that, if I remember, to do some alleys. And they determined the worst three alleys in Virginia right now that, they're broken up underneath, and people are having sewage coming into their basements, doing all kinds of bad stuff. I've got someplace here, let's see, I can probably tell you which alley is there, do you remember which ones there are?
I think we have our, is this the map?
That's the map, yep.
We have, we have the map.
Yeah, and the determination came from not just the condition of the road surface, of the numerous mounts of brake, water main breaks and a sewer line break, so the, the condition of the utilities is really what dictated where we, where we started at, because...
Well, this would cover all the?
All the utilities.
All the utilities that are under that alley.
And the utilities will reimburse as part of that, for their portion of what they, like they usually do for our streets, for their portion of what belongs to them.
Thank you.
And what's nice about the three million dollars, it's unencumbered money, and we can spend it based upon what we need to do in order to accomplish the goals objectives only, and we don't have the money for the alleyway, so this is the three million dollars moving forward, so. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved? Or, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, and the last thing we discussed was the review of the downtown parking area map, I have a big map here, if you'd like me to lay it out on the table, I should've done that before the meeting, to show you all the parking places that we have. Recommendation that came out of us, and administration, and Matt Reed, was to eliminate all permit parking in all city-owned parking lots, with the exception, across the street, we will leave the?
Reserved parking.
Pardon, the reserved parking for city employees, they have no place to park otherwise for a city hall. And then the one down by Grandy's, those spots that are there, reserved for the teeny building or the old teeny building, whatever it's called, no. Leave those, that's the only exceptions, the rest are all, nobody has to pay anything for permit parking, that's our recommendation. And then, after we do this portion, we will take a look. Next step will be for the Street and Alley to meet and talk about two-hour parking side streets, we didn't want it to start with one step first, and move to the second step. So I'm gonna make a motion that we eliminate all permit parking in all city-owned lots.
Okay, moved by Counsel Bearable, is there support? Is there support? All, okay, supported by Counsel Barneselli, further discussion? Counsel Johnson?
So I'm just thinking about the process, can we just do that and be done with it tonight, or does there need to be?
January first.
Effective January one.
I should've said January.
And, and we'll be advertising accordingly?
Heavily. Heavily.
Okay, so I guess I would like, if you would mind, Counsel Bearable, to add that advertisement into the, into the motion.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll add that, Pam.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Barnzelli. And then over to Counsel.
When will that start taking place?
Then January 1st.
January 1st?
Right.
Once we get the advertisements, we have enough time to get in there. And when people come in to renew their permits, the city people that renew those permits just tell them we don't need it anymore, so.
Yeah, put your money back in your pocket.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel Freely.
Just for discussion, not for argument, Sherry, is this a negligible revenue stream that we would then not necessarily be missing? Or is it something we would have to find some way to make up for?
It's minimal, as far as the parking fees and whatever we get in there, it's small.
Okay, so we could find other ways to?
Yes. Does not allow them to park overnight in the parking lots?
Yeah.
That's the one caveat, is our, our new ordinance that we just passed about being on public property and park, you cannot park overnight unless it's designated to park overnight. So there will be some change, that's one change that.
We will advertise too.
Lot to advertise too.
Cruises need to get out there, like if the snowstorm comes now, they need to get in those lots without cars parked, so.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You have more, one more item on there?
One more, one more item. You made me wondering what's happening with Mindat and the intersections with the new school, Rock Ridge and Midway and Borgen Road. Those plans are not completed, they're not decided on what they are at this point in time, so just hang on, there'll be more from Mindat. They're just giving us the first three sections. Those will be probably two years down the road, the Kamatsu, the 18th Street and then 9th Street, what they're going to redo. It's, it's quite interesting. I believe, Britt, you can get maps to the people like we had. She'll get your maps of what Mindat plans to do. Thank you very much, and that concludes that report.
Okay, and there's one more item that came up on the, on your committee meeting, and that was a motion, there was information on the 2021 street project. It's currently requested to be suspended for the winter months as of December 7th, 2022.
Yeah, I forgot about that one, Mayor. Thank you.
Please continue with that.
Yeah, it's from our contractor right now that's working on the 21, 2021 project that goes into next, next year. They can't do any more work, but they want an official date of suspension. So if anything happens, nobody can go back and forth between the city and the contractor. It'll leave them a clean, drop dead date that they'll pick up in the spring to finish those projects. That's, and this was as, they asked for it as of December 7th, I believe, was not, wasn't that the date?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we allow this suspension.
Moved by Counsel Bearable and supported by Counsel Freely to approve the suspension of further winter season of the 2021 street improvement project as effective December 7th, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Johnson.
I would be much more comfortable approving a document than just a phrase in our packet, so.
This will be a document, right, Britt?
There was, it was in the Street and Alley packet. I didn't get it.
There is a document for it.
Yeah, there was a document, official request from Dan Watson from Casper, asking that we solidify December 7th as a date.
Thank you.
And then we'll notify them back by official letter from the city clerk's office, that this has been approved, so. It goes two ways.
Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Britt? We have item, last item was to approve the proposed recommendation from SEH.
That was the discussion, that was the first item that Charlie brought up.
Oh, oh, so that's?
About the HUD project, the federal.
That was out of order there. Okay, thank you very much.
I took it out of order, I apologize, Mayor.
You're out of order. All right, thank you very much. So that's done, so no further reports to be given? Okay, thank you. Move to item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Any council have a Commission Liaison Report they'd like to give this evening? Seeing none. Move to item 11, Department Head Reports. Any department head that'd like to give a report this evening? Do we have Julie Grabenowsky, our library director, any reports you'd like to give? Okay, thank you. Britt, anything more?
Let's talk about closures. The city hall will be closed on the 23rd and the 26th for the Christmas holiday. Iron Trail Motors Event Center will be closed on the 24th and the 25th.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from our city attorney? Mr. Lindsay, anything?
No report, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Anything from you, Pam?
Yes, just a reminder for Thursday at 3:30 for the special meeting.
Very good, thank you. Britt, Sherry?
Thank you, counsel. Just wanted to thank the council and staff. The budget is always, starts up in April and it's always a yearly thing. So we'll be looking at 2024 here. And just wanted to thanks for all the help.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Item 12, Council Reports. Any council would like to give a report this evening? Counsel Johnson?
I just have a quick reminder, Britt sent out an email about snow emergencies and whether or not the snowstorm actually occurs. Citizens of Virginia need to be aware that we do have a snow emergency policy ordinance now, and you could need to move your vehicle, so stay tuned to local media, our Facebook page, to know if you're going to have to move your vehicle off a city street due to the snow emergency.
Yeah, I'll check that off my list, thank you very much. And it is, there is a document that can be ascertained by all the, anyone who wants it, that explains it and how it works, when it gets operated, who gets notified, so thank you for that, Counsel Johnson. Any other council reports? Okay, I have one, one report, a request from the elected body. I'm going to be meeting with, with Britt and likely our lobbyist, Mike Jerrick and Valerie Jerrick with respect to our 2023 legislative priorities. And I know that early on, and we talked about the highest priority we have and the need that we have is some additional funding for the public safety billing. I did have a brief conversation with, with Representative Liz Lagarde and our lobbyist moving forward and, and did make a brief visit to Britt about, talking about going down there soon, or later, right after the holiday season, I've been invited down to do so. So I'm just asking for some direction from, from the council, and then I'll be meeting with Britt to lay out some kind of a synopsis or a guideline of what our needs are, what our priorities are and what we want. And there's a couple of things that we have, some bills, not only from the bonding bill, but from other potential sources at the legislature, like the climate bill for a public safety billing and those kind of things. So I'm just asking for anyone, if you have any other information that you want, forward it to Britt, and then we can have a meeting, and then I'll be going down to the legislature and, and carrying those directives that you make down there for, for discussion and try to visit some of these legislators, hopefully in person this year as opposed to in a hotel room during Zoom or some other comment area. Counsel Bearable?
Mayor and Administrator Britt Seib, are we going to put back the things that never got taken up last year? Are they going to be part of our priorities? I think they need to be.
We're still in the, we're still in the tax bill for our public safety center to allow us to exceed our debt limit by?
We're going to be talking about those things again with our lobbyists?
And it's anticipated that that's going to start the discussion, is the tax bill that was left off from last year.
Yeah, and I, and I have a huge concern, and I'm glad you folks are going down because 69 legislative bodies were changed last year, and I don't know what they're going to want. They're going to, they're going to probably kiss us goodbye, but.
Well, with a $17 billion budget, you think, or over surplus budget, you think they figure something?
Well, they better do something.
Yes, they better do something.
That was crazy this morning when I saw that in the newspaper.
Yeah, yeah. But thankfully, it wasn't the tax bill, and as we know, they didn't pass a tax bill last year. Hopefully, they pass one this year.
But they, now they have to bring it up?
Yes.
Okay, that's the question I wanted.